All right, I do have a thumbs up. So I would like to welcome everyone here this evening. Call this meeting to order. This is our regular meeting of Tuesday, August the 6th. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation from Alderman Vaughn, and then a moment of silence. So if you would please join with me.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Vaughn, if you would please.
Good evening, Father, good evening, Lord Jesus. Good evening, Father, good evening, Father. Again, Father God, through your hand in service, preparing for what we come before you again. A God who does not give ownership for all the fashion on our side shoes for the world. To the heavens, Father, and to the city. Father God, we say thank you so much for just allowing us to be elected and put in this position. Father God, we pray that you can always move on our hearts, our heart will be the same as you were today. We ask that you approve the emails of our citizens, Father God, those unknown, unseen, and unseen. Bless us to stand before you, Father God, with truth in our heart for these citizens of this town. We thank you for all your lives, for achieving, Father God. We thank you so much. Because without your guidance and direction, we can't do anything, and we can't go anywhere. We pray so much, Father, we pray that you will be part of this in all our citizens, Father God. That you will continue to protect them through this hard weather. We know that you are the God who put no woman on this land. A God who said you never leave us, nor would you succeed. A God who said we have not because we have sinned. God, we ask you for all these things that we make, but most part, Jesus Christ, we trust you because we love you. Jesus, amen.
All right, once again, thank you, everyone. We appreciate you being with us this evening. Our first order of business will be approval of the official agenda with consented items. And let me ask for any potential changes to that agenda. Alderman Vaughn, anything? Okay. Alderman Rupp?
No ma'am.
Alderman Brooks?
No ma'am.
Alderman Beatty?
No ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Siskel?
I don't necessarily want to take this off consent, but I would like to make some comments about the budget, either now or once we start.
Why don't we do that under comments of Alderman?
Okay.
Is that okay?
That works.
Vice Mayor?
No ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Vaughn?
No ma'am, thank you.
All right, seeing no changes to the agenda or the consented items, do I have a motion to approve both?
Sure, move.
A motion from Alderman Rupp, do I have a second?
Sure.
Second from Alderman Beatty. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. And with that, I will read the consented items. First, we have consideration of the minutes of the July 12th, 2024 work session of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. There are consideration of the minutes of the July 16th, 2024 recess meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Then we have, under Board Business, item B, consideration of calling for public hearings on the 2024-2025 budget and tax mileage for the city of Starkville. Item C, consideration of advertising for bids for 30-ton HVAC unit for the Starkville-Ottawa County Public Library. Under Department Business, Airport, we have consideration of renewing the property vehicle and equipment insurance services with Star Global Insurance Company for airport liability coverage at a cost of $6,936 for one year. Item two is request approval to purchase a John Deere Z950M Z-Track Zero-Turn 60-inch mower on state contract in the amount of $14,931.74 for the airport department. Three is request approval to purchase a pre-owned 2022 Chrysler Pacificum minivan, including a three-year, 36,000-mile vehicle service contract, BSC, the amount of $26,285 based on standard market pricing for a courtesy vehicle for the airport department. Four is request approval to accept an MDOT multimodal grant, MM0068-1325, in the amount of $490,100 for construction of a hangar for the purpose of leasing it to UMMC Air Care and Disaster Response Operations for $490,100 ARC grant for $827,500, with a local match of $146,400 to be shared by MSU, Ottawa County, and the city. Under Community Development Planning, we have, one is consideration of FP24-05. It's a request for final plat approval for St. Joseph Campus subdivision at 607 University Drive in a T5U zoning district. Under Engineering, we have consideration of adopting the final Safe Streets and Roads for All Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. Two is consideration of declaring a 1995 Ford F-150 VIN ending in 4571, and a 2002 Ford F-350 VIN ending in 8402 as surplus and auctioning on Gov. Deals. Three is consideration of permission advertised for requests for qualifications, RFQ, for engineering master service agreements. Four is consideration of permission to advertise for requests for qualifications, RFQ, for master service agreements for geotechnical engineering and construction materials testing services. Five is request authorization to execute an interlocal agreement with Mississippi State University for the Safe Streets for All SS4A Action Plan Grant. Under Finance Administration, we have request authorization for the city clerk's office to advertise for source of supply for the street and sanitation general city for the period of October 1, 2024 through September 30, 2025. Under HR, we have request authorization to hire Everett Covert, Jacory Douglas, Jalen Jones, and Yakov Weinstein as non-certified police officers, firefighters, I'm sorry, non-certified firefighters in the Starkville Fire Department. Under two, we have request authorization to hire the following employees in the Starkville Utilities Department. Lee Mayfield is a closed-circuit television CCTV sewer operator. Eddie Redmond is a closed-circuit television CCTV sewer maintenance technician. Calvin Brown, Ethan Ratliff, and Jacob Watley as water technicians, water technicians, too. Erwin Peoples is utility locator technician. Yaphet Hearn and Samuel Trotter as seasonal meter technicians, and Brad Davis as a lineman. Three is request authorization to hire Skylar Davidson, Marquez Randolph, Blanca Savedra as police officers, and Robert Agaris as a reserve police officer in the Starkville Police Department. Four is request authorization to hire Alex Bishop and D'Angelo Scales as sanitation workers in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Five, request authorization to hire Destiny Strevel as a radio operator dispatcher in the Starkville Police Department. Six is request authorization to hire Charles Jenkins as street maintenance worker one in the street department. And seven is request authorization to hire Jalen Davis, Edwin Kennard, and Frederick Rice as seasonal sanitation workers in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Under Parks, we have consideration of approval of the lower quote from Terry Service, Inc. in the amount of $10,950 for the repair of the HVAC system in the Travis Outlaw Center. Two is consideration of approving change order number two with econ construction for the JL King Park Splash Pad Expansion Project in the amount of $2,235 increase for the repainting of the two existing pavilions. And three is consideration of approving the change order number three to Mills Contracting for the Needmore Community Center Project in the amount of $134,395 increase for replacement of existing sidewalks, with wider sidewalks, as well as pavilion and pedestrian lighting improvements. Under Police, we have request approval to purchase from Next Step Innovations the lesser of two quotes and state contract number 40731097-3760, nine desktop computers, 10 laptop computers, and 25 patrol laptop computers at $70,160. Under Utilities, we have request approval from Mississippi State University Athletics Office to provide an insert into one month's utility bills at no cost to Starkville Utilities to promote the 2024 football season and schedule. Two is request authorization to advertise for bids at the Influent Pump Station Rehabilitation Project at the wastewater treatment plant. And that concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm happy to do that. And next, we move to Mayor's comments. And I am really excited today because we have a feature that we're going to have. Mr. Smiley, would you come up? Would you bring two fabulous sanitation workers with you when you come? First, I want to reintroduce Ronnie Smith to everyone. He is a commercial driver, too, for the city of Starkville. He's worked for us for over 14 years. He is a seasoned and dependable truck driver, which he proved today, and we will be talking about that in a minute. He has exceptional driving skills and extensive knowledge of truck operation and equipment safety. He holds a Class A Commercial Driver's License, CDL, a tanker vehicle endorsement, TVE, and a hazardous materials endorsement, HME. Known for his meticulous route planning and vehicle maintenance, Ronnie ensures safe and efficient operations. He is a native of Starkville, and he has been joined with us tonight by his wife, Jennifer, and together they have two children, Meredith, who, by the way, it's her birthday today. She is 14 today, and Bailey, who is eight years old. And he enjoys spending time outdoors and cherishes moments with his family. So that's one. And second, we have Mr. Hunley. Jared is a commercial driver, one, and he's not been introduced to us before. He's new. He joined the team just 21 days ago. Jared is a dedicated driver with a strong understanding of truck and equipment safety. He is skilled in operating diesel engine, heavy-duty garbage trucks, and dumpsters. He holds a Class A Commercial Driver's License. Before joining the City of Starkville Sanitation Department, he worked as a front-end driver at Comprehensive Logistics, a native of Caledonia. He's married to Casey Hunley, and they have four children, Wesley, Olivia, Adeline, and Braxton. And in his free time, he enjoys being a handyman and playing video games with his family. Now, on to the reason that these folks are here tonight. This morning, I got a call at about 5:00. I usually get early morning calls from the chief, but I got an early morning call from Mr. Smiley, and he said that one of our commercial trucks, you know, they have those early morning runs, had caught on fire, and that they were dumping the load, or had dumped the load, in the school or parking lot. And so the fire department was there putting it out. And when you dig a little further into it, Mr. Smith exercised extraordinary judgment with his seasoning, and he just dumped that load because, had he left it alone, that fire would have caught on fire further. And not only that, but he would ruin the truck as well as the load in the back. And so essentially, those trucks are somewhere between $300,000 and $400,000. So the two of them together saved the city quite a bit of money. And by the time I drove by there a little later in the day, it was all cleaned up. And I have to thank, at the same time, we have to thank Mr. Chris Black for the street department and the fire department who came out and washed down this parking lot. But the real huge thanks goes to you gentlemen. And so I wanted to make sure that you were acknowledged and thanked for being there and for making such a quick decision that saved the city an incredible amount of money and made us very proud, and nobody even knew it happened until we talked about it, right? And that's a wonderful thing. So I didn't want to do that, and just as a quick thanks, I have, you're going to have to... It's my honor. Just a little, just a little. Very well. Thank you very well. Thank you both so much. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
And you have a happy birthday. All right, and we don't have any other introductions, but now you don't have to come back. Other items to be mentioned for us that I will take the privilege of doing will be, we'll have our Cool Papa Bell dedication. If you recall, when we opened Cornerstone, the statue was not there. So the statue is in place. It's been in place for a while, but we've never really had a formal dedication. So we are set up, we will not have a work session this next Friday because we would skip one anyway, but we've got it set up for 11:00 out at Cornerstone. And hopefully, we will have some of the Cool Papa Bell family out there with us, and we'll have just a little dedication. It won't last long, but it'll be an opportunity to highlight that statue. So that is that particular item. And then one more, we have National Night Out, and it's going on right now. Didn't it start right now?
From 6:00 to 9:00.
From 6:00 to 9:00, okay. And so it is at the Sportsplex, and they always have wonderful things. Did you have hot air balloons again this year?
Hot air balloons.
Okay, so there are hot air balloons, there are jumping, there's food, there's all kinds of vendors out there. And so I encourage everyone to go out. It's always a fun time, and I regret this year will be one year I will miss it. But anyway, I'm sure that, Alderman Vaughn, you usually go out there. Are you planning on going out?
Yes, ma'am, I guess.
Wonderful, wonderful, okay. Well, we will have board representation for sure out there, so. All right, and that's the end of my comments. Do we have anything? Alderman Vaughn, anything?
No.
All right. Alderman Rupp?
No ma'am.
All right. Alderman Brooks?
If you would.
Yes, sir.
So next week is the, I would say such and such an annual, but they did skip for a little while. But the Sturgis Motorcycle Rally is next week, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And I've been part of that committee that's got that thing together this year, a small part. There's a bunch of people who've worked hard on this, and it benefits Starkville, Sturgis, Acman, Lewisville, Mathston, for all the surrounding towns. But I thought I'd just give you just a little quick highlights of some of the things going on. On Thursday night, there will be a band, a full-circle party band. That's a group out of Acman over there, and some of you guys probably know some of those. On Friday night, there'll be two bands, and the Dinner Ride is on Friday afternoon. It'll be coming through downtown.
We'll go down Main Street, right?
Yeah, the mayor approved that, and it'll come right up.
They're close, eh?
Duncan Scott, right down Main Street to Old West Point Road, and then a couple bands after that, 7:30 and 10:00. And, you know, the admission is like $10 for a wristband that covers all of these bands and the things that are going on. Saturday, there'll be bands in the afternoon, well, actually, starting morning, along Highway 12. And then at night, one of the featured bands will be our own Alderman Rupp here with the Octo Outlaws at 7:30, and then another band after that. So, you know, we would love for everybody to come out and take it, you know, just see what's going on over there. They'll have bike games and a poker run, which is really a fundraiser for Alzheimer's this year. And so, again, it starts on Thursday afternoon at 4:00. And these guys over there, they've worked hard to get this thing together, and it's going to benefit all the neighborhoods around here, all the towns around here.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Beatty?
No ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Siskel?
Thank you, thank you. I'd like to first say that the Cool Papa Bell dedication date, statue dedication date, was not chosen because it is quite possibly the hottest day of the year, but it's as close as we could get to the 50th anniversary of his induction into the Baseball Hall of Fame. Lots of famous athletes from Mississippi, lots of famous baseball players from Mississippi, but Cool Papa Bell is Starkville's only Hall of Fame baseball player. So do come out. It's a great opportunity to look at Cornerstone, if you haven't seen it before. What I wanted to do was just take a minute and talk about our budget for this year. Most people don't have the opportunity to get to see the sausage made, so I wanted to kind of run through how a lot of this happens. It's a multi-week process. Begins with meeting with department heads, trying to determine what their needs are with their current programming, what their expenses are likely to be. And then we also talk about things that they would like to add, expanding services, that sort of thing. That's our starting point. From there, we make a best estimate of our revenues, compare the two numbers, and on years when we're lucky, the revenues are sufficient to cover the ongoing operations and any expanded services. Typically, though, that is not the case, and that was not the case again this year. When we got to the bottom line, added everything up, we had about a $227,000 deficit. Most of that was driven by public safety things. We included money in case we received the SAFER grant, which would allow us to hire nine new firemen. We knew that there would be unreimbursed expenses that go along with that grant, and so we budgeted for those unreimbursed expenses. We won't know for sure about that SAFER grant until possibly as late as October. So we've included in our budget. We also, as a board, and with the chief's input, had made the decision that we were supportive of expanding our camera program here in the city of Starkville to include more cameras around the city and to staff the Arctic Center. And I'm not even going to guess what Arctic stands for. I botched it pretty badly the other day. So we included monies in there for that. We also, at Alderman Beatty's suggestion, and it was a really good idea, decided that we would begin to try to fund a building repair fund, a capital improvements fund, for things that happen invariably, but which we don't typically have a budget for. This year, it was $40,000 worth of repairs to the stairwell at the back of the building, the air conditioning unit at the library. Neither of those were budgeted, and so we had to scramble and find a way to pay for those things because they weren't budgeted. So we had added something for that. When we had our work session last Friday, we did not have a full board, and we did not take any action, but we did take the temperature of the people who were at the board, at the work session. And it appears that while it's easy to say that one supports something in the abstract, when the time comes to actually fund these programs, it gets a little harder. And there did not appear to be any appetite for a tax increase this year. So, back to the drawing board. We have eliminated the building repair fund. We have reduced greatly the camera program, which means that that won't get implemented until almost a year from now, next spring or summer. And then we reduced litigation expenses. We bumped that up because we have a couple of ongoing lawsuits and anticipate perhaps some more. So we reduced that, and we're just hoping that our attorney gets those things settled before they become terribly expensive. But anybody who's been involved in the litigation knows that you can't always predict those kind of things, can you, Vice Mayor?
You're correct.
So what we have tonight that we're calling for a public hearing on is a balanced budget that covers our ongoing operational expenses. It delays the public safety issues that we had hoped to implement this year, and it does not have a tax increase. And I just wanted people to be aware that this is not something we do lightly or that we do on the fly. We spend a good bit of time going line by line by line, determining what we need to put in there for expenses, and then we do the same thing with revenues, line by line by line. We make our best guess for what those revenues are going to be. And our crystal ball is just like everybody else's. Some days, it's a little clearer than it is others, so. But no tax increase proposed for this year, and a very delayed camera program for the police department, and the delayed building repairs. So if y'all have any spare time, offer a prayer that none of our city buildings develop leaks or need any additional work. So thank you.
Vice Mayor, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor. I did listen to the work session very closely, as I do with all of the work sessions that I do not attend. But the reason I'm seeking recognition now, Honorable Mayor, and colleagues, and to the public and all others in attendance, is that I listened to our honorable budget share very carefully. And honorable budget share, you used the words in your comments very meticulously that the current budget as now before this Honorable Mayor and Board delays your words or delays the public safety issue of cameras. Now, I listened to the work session, but those words in my legal mind and opinion have a very significant meaning, and I don't want to use my lawyer interpretation on it. I would like you to apply your certified public accounting professional interpretation of it. So when you used the word delays the public safety issue, and that the camera problem will be delayed until next spring, being the spring of 2025, please elaborate on exactly what you mean by those words that you articulated.
We did include some monies, we did include some monies in the budget for the camera program. However, it was a reduced number and a reduced staffing opportunity for the police department. This will allow us to dip our toes into the water of expanding this program. It will have to be fully funded next year. So we have, in accounting terminology, kick the can down the road. So that part will need to be fully funded next year. If we want to fully implement that program next year, being fiscal year '26, that next budget, we will need to, again, budget for more cameras and more staffing. So delayed means we have marginally amped up what that program is doing, and it will come back to the board in a future budget as to whether we want to fully implement that or not.
Mayor, just a couple additional follow-ups. Honorable Budget Share, let's dial off a little bit first, about two or three little questions. As to the... As to delay implementation, the Chief of Police, Honorable Chief of Police had mentioned at an earlier meeting that he would like to have two full-time staff members. Does this budget that is before this Mayor Board this time, does it include the monies for those two full-time staff members?
One, so he has one full-time staff person.
So the answer, of course, is no, does not include them.
It does not, no.
And, and our Chief of Police did request for two full-time staff members.
Yes.
So in other words, if we're not honoring the Chief of Police's request, then we're not going to have the, the camera program that our Chief Law Enforcement Officer of this great city is requesting, is that right?
That's correct.
So in other words, if we don't do that, then we are not accepting the full recommendation of our Honorable Police Chief as to the safety of our city.
That's, that's correct.
And so in order, Honorable Budget Chair, just for informational purposes, if we're going to keep our city safer continuously and realizing the fact that we're about to have seven home football games, starting on the last Saturday of April, August, August of 2024, and given the fact that we're about to get another 22-plus thousand students back into this city of Starkville, Mississippi, what dollar figure are you proposing as the season, an experienced Budget Chair and only CPA, a member of this board, only Certified Public Accountant on this board, what dollar figure are you requesting that we need to have a full camera program? What dollar figure additionally that we need?
We, we would, we would need to add back $140,000, which is about a third of a mil.
So, so we are $140,000 short of, of the full camera program. So what would that $140,000 provide us that we do not have right now?
Additional cameras, additional cameras and additional personnel.
How many additional cameras would it provide?
That one, I'm going to have to defer to Joel. I don't remember the, I don't remember the numbers.
Forty total.
Forty total, and, and so we, we've, we've reduced that number. I think we were planning to do 20 this year and 20 next year, so.
So we, we're.
So we'll go to 10, I think, this year.
So when you say this year, you mean.
This fiscal 25, fiscal 25.
Instead of 40 cameras?
Yes.
We only have 25% of that total from October 1 of 2024?
Don't, don't hold me to that number, but that's, that's, that's my understanding was that it was a two-year camera purchase program.
Okay, I'm confused now. So I don't, but this was, this is a board, board comments kind of arrangement here. So if, if we're getting a little bit further off into, into something that I think is probably more of a full board discussion if we're going to talk about the budget, so.
But, 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 I mean, I'm, I'm pro the comments, so let me have the floor.
Well, I, no, you've got the floor, but you're also going back and forth involving Sister Trump, so.
I understand, but, but this is what this is about, we, you know.
Yes, sir.
No rules to prohibit it.
Go ahead.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I don't, I was going to say, I don't know the exact camera number, so.
No, no, I'm not finished, I'm, I'm just emboldening, I'm just coming up with ideas. So, so based on that, that shortage we have, and we have, you know, approximately, based on your recollection, about 10 of the 40, more or less. And so we're not funding the camera system that we've been discussing continuously as our Chief of Police provides. So it's just kind of a band-aid, is that what you're saying?
That would be one way to characterize it, yes.
All right, and, and Mayor, let me, let me close by saying this. Certainly, you know, I'm not one that just advocate a tax increase and I have such a rich history against tax increases. But one thing I would like to say, as I'm going to record before on this issue, we cannot compromise public safety. And it is my personal opinion as a taxpayer, as a citizen and as the Vice Mayor for this city and Member of the Board, that we, as a city, needs to take all reasonable, prudent and proper measures to ensure that our city is continuously reasonably safe at all times. We often and consistently talk about giving deference to the recommendations from our department heads. And we have our Chief of Police, Honorable Mark Valet, who has consistently recommended to this board that he needs two full-time staff members. And from what I understand, like, that it's only going to be only one, that's not going to do it. And I just want to close with about just a couple more minutes by saying that I want to just very respectfully and honorably and professionally leave my colleagues, who are just so distinguished, you know, distinguished, Mayor, with these words that it is just very incumbent upon us as leaders to accept certainly a wise recommendation from our top law enforcement officer in this city to take all the actions that we can to keep and to continue for all those within our corporate limits to be reasonably safe at this time. There is nothing, in my opinion, that should be a higher priority than safety. That is one of our ultimate duties as members of this governing body to ensure that we are reasonably safe. The Chief of Police has said that he needs the 41 cameras. He needs two full-time staff members to provide the necessary personnel duties and functions to ensure that the necessary work is being done so that we can keep a safe environment. There's nothing wrong with that, and, and that's very elementary to me. And we just have to make these tough decisions to whatever that requires to keep the city safe. I mean, we are a leading city in, in many categories and we certainly do not need to lag behind like a, a lot of other municipalities in this, in this city and this country. We have a duty with, with the way that this environment is and throughout this world, throughout this state, throughout this Golden Triangle area and just throughout all places. You know, we just have an ultimate duty to all of these peoples who come to our town and whereby we just have been recently designated, you know, as the great city of Starkville. I mean, we are just viewed as a great place to be and, and I think we need to take all reasonable efforts to, at best, however we want to arrive at this funding. We can cut something else, but we need to get to the bottom line. And, and Mayor, I understand this, and as I close, I wanted to say this because this is a very important issue. I'm not trying to impress upon anyone. I just want to hopefully that the taxpayers will hear this and, and at least weigh in on it, give us your feedback. If you want this city safe, let's help bring about the necessary strength to invoice and input to your system of democracy to keep your, your city safe. And, and I'm proud of this city, there's been a lot of change here, there's been a lot of transformation here. And this community is, is going to be continuously safe. We've got a great Chief of Police. We cannot listen to him just to some things, and some things we don't, we don't listen to him for. We need to follow his recommendation, that's what we hired him for, and I'm willing to do that. So hopefully, before this budget's adopted, that we will find a way and means to come up with the necessary funding, whatever that may be, whether it requires cutting some additional elements of the budget and come with this funding. But the bottom line is, we need to make sure that we have the necessary funding to continue to keep our city reasonably safe at all times. And Mayor, you, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Alderman Vaughn.
Honorable Mayor, thank you.
All right. So, since we're on a roll here, I want to, I want to circle back because that was not my understanding from the work session, as you outlined it. My understanding was that we would get 20 cameras next year and 20 cameras the following year. So that was, we cut it in half and.
Twenty is 10.
No, no, we cut it in, we cut the 40 in half because we could only, Mr. Clements said.
And, and I thought, and I'm sorry, he's not here tonight.
He's on vacation, yes.
I was prepared to talk about dollars, but not numbers of cameras. But my understanding was always that there would be a number that were bought this year and that there would be a number that were bought next year as well. So that's where I got to the 20 per year. And I may be, I may be dead wrong about that, so.
Chief, do you, do you have a recollection associated with the 20 versus, it's a total of 40, correct? And, and the total for an annualized, as I recall, the total for an annualized budget for the police department for the two people and the cameras was 280, right?
280 was what we budgeted.
Okay, so we budgeted 140 for this coming year.
We dropped that to 140, which would be the 10 cameras and the one person.
See, that, to me, that's still 20 cameras. 280 was the total for a full year of all cameras, et cetera, and so.
That's cameras and staff.
Yes, uh-huh.
So 140,000, that's $7,000 camera is, is 20 cameras. And if we drop that number to 70,000, that's 10.
I thought we dropped it from 280 to 140.
But 280 is 140 for cameras and 140 for staff.
Okay, I misunderstood that. I thought the staff was in the, under the staff column, not under the camera column.
It's, it's in a separate line item, but the 140 in each of those buckets.
Okay, well, I totally misunderstood that in that case. Alderman Vaughn?
My notes, it says install 20 cameras per year. That's what we said.
Yeah, and that was what I, that was what I understood too, so.
And that's what would cost 140,000, but we've dropped that number down to 70. And so that, that will be 10 cameras this year, hopefully 20 next year, maybe 30. We'll see what next year looks like.
Yes, the projection would have been 145, yeah.
Mayor, may I speak to that?
Uh, Alderman Beatty, yes, you're asking for recognition, yes.
I just want to touch on.
Wait, hold it, I gave recognition. You don't want recognition?
I'll, I'll.
Alderman Vaughn?
Vice Mayor, I agree with you, and I do feel like the humans are very vital to the town's safety. And I would, if we would have voted tonight for a tax increase, I would have been one of the ones. And I know that that's not a popular opinion, but that is how important they are. I feel like for the future of Starville's safety, so I agree with that, and I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Well, I'm very distressed that I totally misunderstood the calculations because I thought we were getting 20 and 20, so, my bad. Alderman Beatty?
So we're getting both?
We're getting 10 cameras and one officer. We're getting 10 cameras, one officer.
All right, all right. Well, what I would say is that, I mean, I mean, we're, we're fiduciaries of taxpayers' money. And we're, we've got a $30 million budget down to 220-something thousand dollars. Trying to trim that down to where we balance our budget. Now, what's being left out of this is we're increasing pay raises across the board. It's, it's in the Human Resource category under Contractual Services. It's in our budget for 622,865. So, you know, those are across the board, pay raises for, for the regular working, file, ranking, of, ranking, file, working folks in our departments, which we feel like is necessary, you know, to keep up with inflation and try to give people a little bit of extra, you know, going along. I will say this, had, had we voted or pulled out and voted to increase the millage rate, basically increased taxes, that would have been three out of four years. And I'm not saying that every year you don't need to raise, raise taxes. I guess what I'm saying is that there are places in this budget where we've added things. I think things of value, like the pay raises, they're important for our city employees. And we're trying to get the cameras purchased and installed and the personnel onboard in the police department. And it may take us two to three years to do that, but our intention is to follow through with the Chief's recommendations and to do that. Our sales tax projections are, Alderman Siskel, fluid is kind of what, I don't know what.
Aggressive is my number.
But I mean, we could miss sales tax projec, we could, we could meet our sales tax projections or exceed them. We could be short by 300, 400,000. In other words, we get out, we, we think we're playing with 8,000,000 and we, our sales tax makes, projections may be 300, 300,000 short. We don't know. I think that what was put in last Friday was a 3% increase to cover basically what we've had in the past year. We've been tracking about a 3% increase in inflation and try, and assuming that we sell the same stuff in Starville with no increase, that if everything's gone up about 3%, our, our sales tax, the grocery retail sales and the ensuing sales tax that we receive in state would be up by 3% too, which puts us up at about what, Alderman Siskel, 9.5, 9.6 million or something projected? There's a, there's a combined number on this first page that I.
Right, I think it's about 9.8.
9.8 or something, I mean.
I didn't bring my work papers with me, I'm sorry.
I don't think it's unreasonable to expect us to meet that, that projection. But that's something that we could, you know, we could, we could be talking about 200,000 and try and close a gap on the 30 million, or 200,000 and a 30 million, 30 million dollar general fund gap. And we could be off 300,000 plus or minus in sales tax pretty easy. We just don't know. We're trying, we project and try to look at what we're, what we're going to do next year. But that's a big contingency, so it's, it's a big area that we, unknown, I guess you'd say. We're, we're pretty close on it, but we don't really know. And, and the dri, there are drivers in the economy and things that could affect retail sales, not just here, but everywhere, that would ultimately affect the amount of revenue that we get, our diversion that we get from the state of Mississippi. But I do think that we, we've done due diligence on this budget and I think that there's been some sensitivity to the fact that, that taxes have been increased in the last three years twice, and they were necessary. But we were looking at this year to see if we could, could make things work and make ends meet without having to, to raise taxes. And so that was, that's been at least some of the sentiment on the board, and, and I share that sentiment. Mayor, you, thank you.
Alderman Rupp?
Ms. Harden, what does a quarter of a mil generate? Yeah, we're kicking around all these numbers, and the proposed increase was a quarter of a mil, which is 80-some thousand dollars, okay? We were going to get 50 out of the building fund, some from legal, and then some from a fund Ms. Harden, you had discussed with us. So it was cutting zero cameras, zero personnel to come up with that 85,000. And I think it's important because we were all at the work session, department heads, the mayor, several of the aldermen, and we were discussing not hundreds of thousands, 85,000 and how we were so close to having a balanced budget. And keep in mind, this isn't our money, this is your money, that we thought we could make that stretch and not raise taxes for the citizens, and it was 80-some thousand dollars, and we found it. We walked out in agreement and found it.
Well, we were short 226,735,66, as I recall. And then from that, we took the 140 out of it, right? So that's where the 140 came from. I just misunderstood the 140 to be half the cameras and half the cameras, not 10 cameras, instead of 20 cameras. So that was my misunderstanding. So the 140 was, was out of the original 226 that we were shy.
Right, but the original millage increase, people need to understand, was for 80-some thousand dollars. And we found that without having to cut drastically. You, Alderman Vaughn?
We, we.
Alderman Vaughn, you don't get to call it, you're not calling it.
We cut 50 from somewhere, we cut 25 somewhere, that gave us 75. And then we cut another 5,000, made 80,000. And then we've been there to fund everything without a, a tax increase, is what we said prior. So I'm, I'm trying to see what, what's in happens in prior.
Well.
These are numbers that we, these are numbers that we give.
Yes, well, again, it's, in large part, this is my fault because I didn't understand. I thought we were cutting back from 40 to 20 cameras. We were doing 140,000, that we were cutting, that was half the, half the cameras. And so I misunderstood completely the, the magnitude of the cut, that the 140 was to cut back to 10, which was not at all what I envisioned. So it was my bad for not understanding that any better. But you were asking the question, Alderman Siskel, did you have the, did you have an answer?
No, I just wanted to recap, that when we started, we were 227,000 short. Reducing the cameras brought us down to 85,000, give, give or take. And that's when we, that's when we found the, we, we decided to eliminate the 50,000, the 25,000 and on down. But the, but the critical, the critical part that we cut was the 140 for the camera system.
Okay. And Alderman Brooks?
Just a question, though, but if we went along with a quarter of a mil tax increase tonight, we wouldn't get the rest of the cameras regardless, we would only, because we, that's only 85,000. We'd already cut down.
You'd need, you'd need 4, uh, 0.4 to put the cameras back in.
0.4 mil, put the cameras back in?
Or just the cam. Or just the cameras, if you were just putting the cameras and not the second person. Give me a second. You'd need that quarter mil to put the cameras back in.
To get the total of twenty next year, which is actually the maximum they could deliver would be the total of twenty. And we have, and we have short, short, we are short-staffed in the police department as it stands right now. You could conceivably fill one of those positions with a second person, but anyway, that's a different discussion. I mean, it's the same discussion, but it's a different element to that discussion. Anything else, Alderman Brooks?
No.
All right, well, now that we've had that conversation, and I feel really stupid. All right, citizens' comments. Anyone wishing to provide the board with any feedbacks under citizens' comments? Mr. Turner?
Greetings, Mayor, my name is Avon Toner. I'm what, seven. All right, to the mayor, to the police chief, to the fire chief, to sanitation. The citizens are, we're very nervous, very afraid of this election. Our, we'd like for everyone to be careful and alert. We see that the dragon, grand dragon, uh, the country has been deceived. And now it seems like that the dragon is going after, making fun of, of the churches or trying to start a race war. So we, we need to be very careful, and we need to definitely be careful of Project Twenty Twenty-Five. That is the dictator playbook. So that, we're gonna have to be careful in the days, common days ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board under citizens' comments? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll close citizens' comments. We'll go to our first public hearing, which is a public hearing on adopting an ordinance to establish prohibitions against criminal loitering and aggressive solicitation. Any comments from the board? Alderman Brooks, do you have anything you wish to say before opening the public hearing?
Uh, not this time, Mary, please.
All right, anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'll open this as a public hearing. This is the first one that we will have on this, on this ordinance, this proposed ordinance. We will have a second one at the next board meeting with the consideration of actually adopting it at the next meeting. Anyone wishing to speak either for or against an ordinance that is establishing prohibitions against criminal loitering and aggressive solicitation? Anyone? Either for or against. All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing on that particular item, and we again will take it up at the next board meeting with the, with the potential for adopting. Under Mayor's business, we have consideration of designating the mayor, the building official, and the code enforcement sergeant as authorized representatives under Mississippi Code Annotating Twenty-One Nineteen-Eleven Sub Two to provide the expedited seven-day process for cleanup of properties as defined in the above code section. I, that, that code section should be, should have been in your packets, and it basically is a section that is fairly new, that if it's under two hundred and fifty dollars, not counting administrative costs, and it's under one acre, and if you're over fifteen hundred population, which we are, then you have the opportunity to exercise this additional expedited opportunity to do mowing. It's basically for mowing purposes. So that's the reason I brought it forward, and that's the reason, among other things, the fact that it's a fairly new element to that code section. And so I brought it forward so we could perhaps get things mowed quicker and looking better. So that was the point of it. Any questions, thoughts, concerns? Alderman Brooks?
Actually, this is a perfect time, and I've, in my ward, I've had a call this week about a lot that absentee owner, and they, you know, they just, they mow it whenever they're forced to by code enforcement. And I tried to look up where the, where the owner, and it is, it's an absentee owner. It's actually a corporate entity that owns a lot, but it's a residential lot. And I rode by and looked at this house, it's a, it's a technical area in the Needmore area over there. And so my question to you is then, you could, if we adopt this, then we wouldn't have to go through the code enforcement and the public hearing and all this, we could.
Well.
Expedite this?
Code enforcement would be one of the entities who could, who could acknowledge or assess it as a, as a lot or a violation. And then they would write it up. They have seven days to go through that process, and we'd still bring it to the board as a, for final, but you don't have to wait the fourteen-day period and the ten-day notification and the letter and all of that.
Expedite it, you're from a grass mode.
Yes, yes.
That's really what this place needs. I mean, I rode by and looked, it needs the grass mode.
Right, and it's probably under an acre.
Every, yeah, just one little residential lot, and it needs to be done like we all do ours, every couple of weeks, rather than every six months.
We're not gonna get to do that, because that's not, that's not, under the statute, that's not allowed. You can't make them do it every, every ten days, like we keep it, you know, nice and short, but you can go back periodically, so.
Okay, all right.
Okay, anything else? Nope, Alderman, Alderman Beatty?
How does it seem to you, Mary?
We put a tax lien on it. We're taking it to municipal court, either one or both.
So, basically, you, you can get the code off, drive around and just pick out these things and just say, as well, we're, we're. How long before we actually get the code?
Well, we, we can cut them the next day. I have asked Ms. Harden to find us somebody who'd be willing to respond to us. We, we put out a bid and didn't get any, didn't get any takers on it. But if we can, if nothing else, we can get Mr. Smiley's folks, but I'd hate not, I hate to tie them to doing five lots, for example, if we found five that we found that way. But I'd like to get a contractor who'd go out there and just mow it down.
Mayor, how, how soon can we recuperate money? I mean, how, what, over what timeframe assessing on taxes can get a money back?
Depends on how, whether you wanna take it to, to take them to court or to put a lien on it, so.
You don't assess it on the property?
Mm-hmm, yeah, you assess it on the property.
Well, you accumulate it, three hundred dollars worth of mowing cost to somebody.
Three hundred per mow, so we put it forward, if we mowed it four times out of the year, we put it forward at that.
And you're recuperating on one, on that one year? I like that. I think if we stress that, people could dump them in our lap.
Well, they might, but I'm also gonna do the double-pronged approach and take them to municipal court as well.
I would.
Okay, all right. Anyone else? Alderman Vaughn?
But before we cut, we will be giving them that seven-day notice, right?
Yes, they will have had notice and an opportunity to cure it.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right. I need a motion, folks. I'm sorry, Alderman Brooks, okay, I have a motion for Alderman Brooks. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Second from Alderman Beatty, all right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you, it is unanimous. And then we have, the next one is, we had placed liens on properties that we have already posted them, but we needed to do a resolution. And so this is a curative, this is a look-back resolution for the properties that have had liens that have been placed on them. And as a go-forward, we will do that as part of the normal process. But this next item are the resolutions that were in your packet for those declarations. Any questions about those? Do I have a motion? I have a motion from Alderman Sistrung. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Rupp. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you. And next we have, I know these folks are in the audience here, we have a reconsideration of the declaration of Two Hundred Pilcher Street with parcel number one-one-eight-oh dash zero-zero dash zero-zero-two-point-zero-zero. As being in such a state of uncleanliness as would be a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community, such that a cleanup of the property shall occur. I have asked Officer Perez, and she was kind enough to do so, to go by and take pictures this morning, so that y'all will have an absolute, up-to-date look at, at the property. You recall from the last time, the circumstances that we, that we talked about and dealt with. So do you have a couple of those pictures you want, you want to provide?
Yes, ma'am, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
This will be as of, as of this morning, thank you.
This is the Two Hundred Pilcher Street that I presented at the last board meeting. The presentation from the last board meeting. I added, add in photos from just this morning.
Those are the, those are they right there, right?
This is this morning.
So that is.
That is what it was as of July eighth and August sixth.
Okay, so it is, it is in a demolition status?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any questions of Officer Perez? Okay, none. All right, comments for the board? Would you like to have the property owner come forward and provide us information? I'm sorry, is that you? Okay, yes. Somebody like to come up and, and if you'd identify yourself, please, ma'am?
Hello, my name is Keon Trainer. I am the eldest daughter of Jimmy C. Trainer.
Yes, ma'am. And so the, you are in the process of demolishing the building?
Yes, we are in the process of doing that. My purpose for being here today, I come from Texas, so it's kind of far. But my purpose of being here today is to ask for an extension for my dad to finish this job. I talked to Ms. Perez previously, and she was informing me that she could give him ninety days. I asked to see if I'm able to get a hundred and twenty days for him to get an extension. We have been working hard, but I do come from Texas to try to assist. My dad is disabled, and we're doing the best we can with the little time we have. So hopefully, we're able to meet that quota by that time. I'm pretty sure we will be able to, but.
We've all done a whole lot in, like, three weeks.
We have, and it's not been easy, but it has, he has worked very, very hard to get where we are today.
And you don't, you don't think you could do something in less than a hundred and twenty days, four more months?
I'm asking for a hundred and twenty days. It could be less than a hundred and twenty days. But I prefer to say, let's give me a hundred and twenty days. We're not, I'm not trying to stress my dad out daily, trying to get up there and do everything, and so that's why I'm asking for a hundred and twenty days.
All right, any questions of Ms. Frank? Alderman Vaughn?
I make a motion to give him a hundred and twenty days, Mayor.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn for a hundred and twenty days. I have a second from Alderman Beatty. And, but with that, there is still the declaration that it is a dilapidated property, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we still will have this declaration that it is a dilapidated property under Twenty-One Nineteen-Eleven, and you will have a hundred and days, a hundred and twenty days to clean it up. And if it's not done at that point in time, we will, the city will come in and do it ourselves.
Yes, ma'am, completely understand.
Is that satisfy you, Alderman Vaughn?
Satisfied.
Okay.
I do have a question, and if you don't mind me asking.
Yes, ma'am.
We are trying to rebuild on that property with a contractor. Is that feasible or desirable?
That's a whole different question. Mr. Havill in the back, back there, will be able to talk with you about that. The gentleman in the blue back there, that gentleman right there.
Awesome, all right.
Take that up with him, please, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, yes, ma'am. Okay, I have a motion and a second. It is for a hundred and twenty days with the declaration that it is a property in such a state of uncleanliness to be a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare, that a cleanup shall occur with a hundred and twenty days for such cleanup to be. And I have motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. And that is, I believe it was unanimous. I didn't hear any dissent. I have claim stock it. Do I have a motion? I have a motion from Alderman Rupp, a second from Alderman Sistrung? Did I hear a second? You didn't?
Second.
Second from Alderman Beatty. All right, thank you. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
May, may.
All right, it is five, five, five to two, motion carries. And, okay, that does take us to the end, takes us to the end of our, of our agenda. Let me call for a work session, and then we will, we will get a motion to recess, please. No, we won't. I've got, I've got, I've got executive session. Darn it. Here was, I was, I was, I was ready to go. I am so sorry. Do I have, do I have a motion to go into a closed session for the purpose of determining the need for executive session?
Remember the movie Aladdin's Safari?
I do not. I do not.
Please move in.